Good afternoon. The Committees on Water and Land and the Committee on Transportation and Culture and Arts is going into its Tuesday's agenda at 3:00. We welcome all of you here this afternoon. This meeting, just for another session as well, including the audio and video of remote participants, is being streamed live on YouTube. You'll find the links to viewing options on the Legislature's website. For our Zoom participants, the testifier audio is muted and video disabled until shortly before it's your turn to testify, and your time limit is a minute as well. And if you do not have additional testimony that is different from your written testimony, we ask that you stand on your written testimony. Time permitting, we'll go into decision-making after we hear from all of the testifiers. Members, we are proceeding with SB 468. This is relating to aquatic nuisance species. It authorizes the Department of Land and Natural Resources to adopt rules to prevent and respond to the introduction of aquatic nuisance species from discharges incidental to the normal operation of a vessel and reflect the relationship between the Federal Vessel Incidental Discharge Act of 2018, as amended, and the state law. DLNR, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. Brian Nielsen, DLNR, Division of Aquatic Resources. The Department stands on its written testimony in support of the bill, and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Coordinated Group on Alien Pest Species, Kristi or Andrew? Okay, Kristi, thank you.
Mahalo, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committees. My name is Kristi Martin with SeaGaps, and I'm here to testify in strong support of this measure. The reason that Division of Aquatic Resources needs these authorities is that in the Vessel Incidental Discharge Act, there are discharges that are not currently under their authorities. One of them, for example, is the sediments associated with anchors or anchor chain lockers, and this has been shown to potentially be able to carry a disease called stony coral tissue loss disease that's present in the Caribbean. It can carry it across the Pacific and end up in our waters. It's important that DAR has the authorities to regulate all of these discharges that can carry this disease. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Hover Users Group or HUGS? Send testimony in opposition, Luke Watkins. Also oppose this measure. Anyone else here wishes to speak to SB 468? Hearing none, and seeing none, let's proceed to SB 1263, and this is relating to commercial ocean recreation. And it requires the commercial ocean operators who take customers into state waters to engage in recreational activities to have at least one individual aboard the vessel who is rescue, diver, or lifeguard certified. DLNR?
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members. The Department stands on its written testimony in opposition.
Okay, thank you. Zachary LaPrada or LaPrada?
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. I will be testifying on behalf of the Ocean Tourism Coalition, as well as individually on behalf of the Coast Guarders. We are speaking in opposition to this bill and joining DLNR in opposing this bill. The primary purpose of the opposition is that many of the vessels covered by this bill are already covered and monitored by the United States Coast Guard as certified vessels, and I am available for any other questions if you have them. Thank you.
Jerry Isham? Okay, in support, Keller Lewis.
Good morning, or good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I've been here since morning. I'm testifying in strong support of Senate Bill 1263 because I believe it will increase the safety for the people on boats. The State Department of Health has a study, the snorkel safety study, which I think afforded all of you, finds that snorkeling is the most dangerous thing that people do when they visit Hawaii. And it's been said that the Coast Guard has jurisdiction over vessels, which is true, but the Coast Guard does not have any restrictions or any training required to supervise people in the water as they snorkel. There are man-over-board drills, there are firefighting drills, there's random drug testing. Furthermore, I believe the state is incumbent upon the state to protect the passengers on these vessels. If you're serving food off of a boat, it has to be a food handler's card. If you're serving liquor off a boat, it has to be a blue card or a yellow card. So clearly, the state recognizes the importance of responsibly preparing food, serving alcohol. I think they should also be responsible for making sure that people have a safe and sustainable adventure on the ocean when they're in Hawaii, and I'll be here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Keller. Denver Kuhn? Sends communications in opposition. Members, there's...
Oh, sorry.
Yes. I have Denver.
He's testifying.
Oh, okay. Jim, are you there?
I am, I am, but they won't unhook me here. There I go.
You're speaking on behalf of Denver as well?
I will unless he wants to chime in on his own here. Yeah, I think he's logged in, I hope. In any event, I would like to, first of all, my name is Jim Kuhn. Pardon me, Chair Anoye and Chair Lee and Vice Chairs. I'm speaking for my company, for Trilogy Excursions, but I want to, first of all, counter the last testimony. I don't know what division he is on, but our Coast Guard here currently requests vessels to conduct snorkeler in distress drills and snorkel incident questionnaires. And so, not only that, anytime there is an emergency, the captain must notify the Coast Guard, file a comprehensive report with the Coast Guard. They do a very thorough investigation, and they're, I believe, very hands-on on this issue. And I would also like to point out that the safest place for a snorkeler to be is on one of our vessels, well-trained personnel, and it's true, snorkeling can be a very dangerous hobby or pursuit if you're not in good shape, and it's incumbent on them.
Jim, your time is up, but are you in support or in opposition?
I'm in opposition. I would like to see an exclusion for certified vessels.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. Aloha. Members, there's four support communications that came to the committee, as well as one in more in comments. Anyone here wishes to speak to SB 1263? Hearing none, and seeing none, we'll proceed to SB 1191, and this is relating to trans-oriented development. This appropriates funds for statewide planning and coordination for transit-oriented development projects identified in the state strategic plan for transit-oriented developments, and we have DLNR. Case sends communication in support, Scott Plan or OPSD?
Harrison Root for OPSD. We stand in strong testimony.
Mahalo. Mark Glick or Representative of the Energy Office?
Chris Shunker, Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand on our written testimony in support of the committee's request.
Thanks, Chris. Members, we do have two in support as well and one in opposition. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 1191? Going once, going twice, we say aloha. Okay, then this concludes the three bills, Chair, that we have with a joint...
Go straight in?
Yeah, we'll go straight in. Okay. All right. Okay, we're going to decision-making, and we want to be right on time because we are busy people today. Otherwise, your bill's going to die. Okay, so bear with us. Okay, members, for the first one, SB 468, and this is relating to the aquatic nuisance Okay, Chair's recommendation is to defer this measure indefinitely, and you know, this issue has come up several times in past sessions, and we understand that the federal law already covers the incident discharges, additional state law rulemaking, and a double-fine system is not necessary as well, so we'll defer this measure. SB 126863, I stand corrected, SB 1263 relating to commercial ocean recreations, and this measure as well, we will defer. We'll pass with the amendments, and we'd like to defect the date to July 1, 2050, as it continues to move on to the next committee for continued discussion. Any discussions?
So we're moving 1263 now?
1263, yes, we're going to defect the date. Okay, are you giving support or not?
No, I'm not. But a little WR. So allow you to work on it.
All right. Any further discussions? For the SB 1263, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. We'll defect the date to July 1, 2050. Any further discussions? Hearing none, Committee on Water and Land for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 1263 with amendments. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Chang is excused, Senator McKelvey...
A reservations.
Senator Favella is excused. Madam Chair, the measure passes with amendments.
Thank you, Committee on...
Thank you. Committee on Transportation, Culture, and Arts' recommendation is to pass SB 1263 with amendments, noting excused absence of Senators Keohe Kauloe. Are there any reservations or noes? If not, Chair's recommendation is adopted.
No, sorry.
Oh, sorry, wait. No for Senator Wah.
Okay, thank you. For SB 1291, and this is relating to the TOD developments, Chair's recommendation is that we pass with amendments. We'll blank the appropriation on page 2, line 14, and defect the date to July 1, 2050 for further discussions. I'm sorry, 1191. Okay, SB 1191, pass with amendments. Any discussions? Hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 1191 with amendments of the three members present from the Committee on Water and Land. Are there any no votes? Any votes with reservations? Hearing none, Madam Chair, the measure passes with amendments.
Thank you.
Thank you for the Committee on Transportation, Culture, and Arts. Same recommendation on SB 1191, pass with amendments, noting excused absence of Senator Keohe Kauloe. Are there any reservations or noes?
No.
No for Senator Wah, and the measure is adopted.
Okay, thank you. This concludes the joint hearing on the Committee on Water and Land and the Transportation Good afternoon. The Committees on Water and Land, the Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts, and the Committee on Government Operations, it's going on to its hearing notice at 3:01 PM in room 224. And again, we will note that this meeting, including the audio and video of remote participants, is being streamed live on YouTube. You'll find the links to viewing options on the Legislature's website, and for those on Zoom, on Zoom land, we'll say that your audio is muted and the video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify for one minute. Time permitting, we'll go into decision-making after we hear from all the testifiers. Okay, members, we are ready to go into SB 1535, and this is relating to transportation. It allows the Director of Transportation to exempt certain ground transportation facility projects from historic preservation review, the environmental impact statement law, and the Hawaii Public Procurement Code under certain conditions. DLNR?
Madam Chair, Chair, the Committee on Transportation stands on its card.
Okay, thank you, Doc. Next up, Office of Planning and Sustainable Development, representing Scott Plan.
Yes, hello, Chairs, Members. I'm Tom Isen with OPSD's Environmental Review Program, formerly known as OECQ for many, many years. I stand on our submitted comments, but would like to emphasize that the process currently provides for agencies to exempt various activities from the erstwhile requirement to prepare an environmental assessment.
Thank you. And members, if there's any questions for those testifiers that come up, please feel free to ask the questions then. It's okay with the Chairs. State Procurement Office.
Aloha. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. Boni Kahakui, the State Procurement Office stands on its written comments and oppositions to this bill. Free to take any questions. Thank you. We're only, excuse me, we're only opposing the 103D exemption.
Well, that's because the project shall not be in excess then for the amount. Is that right?
Well, they're basically asking to be exempt from the procurement code for anything under $100,000.
Yes.
That's why I'm here.
Thank you. DOT or Representative of the Department of Transportation? You're a pretty head sniffing.
Thank you, Chair. Oh, my goodness. Thank you, Chairs. Thank you, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. The Department of Transportation, let me introduce myself. I'm Tammy Lee, Acting Deputy Director for the DOT. We stand on our written testimony in support with comments, and I'm here for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Hawaii, representing Todd Bollinger, sends communication in support. Testifying for ACECH on Zoom?
Yes, Chair, it's Sandy Wong. Let me see if I can turn on my video. Oh, here we go.
Sandy can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, fine.
Okay. So, good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. Sandy Wong, on behalf of the American Council of Engineering Companies, Hawaii, we are in opposition to this bill. Let's be clear, the engineers are all for life safety, and that's why we are opposing this bill. If the procurement was exempt from 103D, that means that design professionals would not be procured based on qualification-based selection, and qualification-based selection ensures that the most qualified engineer does the work. You know, we're really going down a slippery slope here. You know, when I read the testimony in the bill, it says $100,000, but I see that some of the supporters are actually saying, oh, let's go to $250,000 or $500,000. So we're really, we're really going down the slippery slope. Finally, I wanted to say, when I spoke to my engineers, they said the delay is not in permit. The selection process isn't the delay, the selection process is getting the contract out of DOT. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sandy. Members, we have four, let's see, seven others in support of the measure. Anyone here present who wishes to speak to SB 1535? I have a question for DOT. And the question is, what's the extent of DOT projects that would be exempted from the review if this bill were to pass?
So the suggested proposed language in the measure, it has conditions, and basically exempting 6E...
Can you move the mic down?
Sure. Exempting, so any excavation that is greater than 24 inches, and that's because I think anything that is greater has already been kind of like, the ground has already been previously disturbed, and so that's one of the conditions. For chapter 343, basically, I guess, sorry, for 103D, what we're saying is, you know, we're going to follow the qualifications procurement of 103D 304 because it is above the small purchase threshold, so we would do a call for qualifications because we say that, you know, over $100,000 but less than $250,000. We say not to exceed $5 million, and that's because if you need to kind of like expand the roadway construction, it might cost, you know, relatively high amount.
Okay, so specifically bike lanes?
We feel it's bike lanes and also pedestrian access.
Okay, so have we experienced in highways DOT, have we done any bike lanes? Not on our freeways, so have we done many of projects for bike lanes? Because most of it are on county, City and County's roadways, yeah?
I know our statute allows us to do so, but I will have to check with our design branch and our planning branch.
The reason I ask with regards to 103Ds, at times when you do a project, you want to continue. So, you know, if it doesn't, if we're below the threshold, then that means that you'll have to, if you want to extend a long bike way, which actually we should here on Oahu because we have a lot, many short bike lanes, and so if you want to continue, then you would have to stop because of 103D. Is that correct? Procurement? Just asking. Yeah, come on out. I noticed in the case of City and County, when they do the bike lanes, well, maybe they're not obligated to 103D.
They are.
They do, right?
Yes.
Okay, so at times that when you want to make sure that bike lanes are on a continued path and do the construction fast, but then because of the, you know, that particular threshold, then the project have to stop.
And that's one of our concerns, that this will encourage parcelling. So you're under $100,000 or whatever the amount will be, and then you, then you'll do that part, and then you'll decide, okay, I need another section to be under the threshold, and that'll be, you can do that part and then do another section.
At another time.
Sometimes it's simultaneous or right after the other one ends, and so our concern is if they had done it as an IFB, perhaps under 103D 302, they could have done the whole project under one construction job as opposed to cutting it up into three and using the small purchase threshold in each of those sections.
Any questions for Senator Alafonte?
Yes, and following up to the line of questioning from Chair Anoye, what specific projects does DOT have now that could be used if this bill were to pass, or any future potential projects that it could impact?
Senator, my apologies, I have to get back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
So we can talk future, I guess.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Senator Lee? Speaking to this, looking at Department of Transportation Services' testimony on this in support, it's my understanding that in situations where people are, you know, particularly pedestrians crossing streets are getting killed around the state, they're able to go in at the county level sometimes and at the state level, but mostly at the county level, to put in, you know, flashing beacons that people can press to make sure that folks can be visible when they're crossing. Those, I'm told, come in the neighborhood of somewhere between like $20,000 to $40,000 roughly in order to put those in, but they could do that like literally overnight in those situations where there's, you know, clear safety risk, were it not for having to go through, you know, a number of the hoops. Is that something that for DOT's side, you guys have, well, I guess you guys don't want to put those in yet very often? Would this help facilitate that, I guess is what I'm asking?
My apologies again, Senator. I have to get back to you. I have to talk to our traffic branches, roads, or motor vehicle safety office.
And then I guess lastly, let's close out with, I think, part of the intention of the bill, I mean, some of the highway projects that have been done more recently, DOT has chosen not to address the full length of Vision Zero complete streets, other safety adding in sidewalks or safe bike lanes because it would mean adding in two or three feet to the existing travelway, which would trigger a whole bunch of the 343, depending on the funding NEPA and all kinds of other stuff, which potentially this would help expedite so we wouldn't wait five to seven years before another person has a safe way to get through if it's kids going to school along the side of a highway like in Waimea, for example, or other places. Is that the case?
Well, I mean, I think anytime 343 is triggered, I know that, you know, you have to do an environmental document, so I would think that it would take either an EA or EIS, I don't know, depending on the scope of the project.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Senator McKelvey?
Real quickly, the point that was made by Sandy Wong, sorry, the point by Sandy Wong, that procurement isn't the issue, it's not the holdup, and there are expedited procedures for smaller amounts that exist, EPRO, for instance, for a certain threshold, and then trying to find three suitable vendors, and we actually have other bills moving forward we're going to hear supposedly now in the next room that deals with this insofar as the three selection. But to her point, I mean, out of all of the issues that are raised by my co-chairs, you know, insofar as these complete streets programs, procurement really the big, one of the big holdups, or to the point of SPO, is it really not? And it's kind of like being seen as, okay, we'll just do away with procurement, allow parcelling, we'll allow no competition, competitive bids to occur because that's holding up when it's these other 343 and EA things that are doing it.
Well, I think for us, like I said, HRS 304, if we're doing any kind of design, we're required to use that type of procurement. I think the threshold under $100,000, that's the small purchase for services, so I can't imagine that those types of contracts are, you know, take a while. I'm not, I'm not sure about the construction part of it. You know, I think putting out an invitation for bid with specifications, I can't imagine that it would take that long.
Yeah, exactly. That's what Bonnie was saying.
Yeah.
So I think we're getting caught up in the net here of the bill insofar as SPO goes in procurement, but thank you, Tammy, and co-chairs, I appreciate you allowing me that line of questioning.
Okay, any further discussions? Hearing none. Okay, we'll go into decision-making on this triple hearing. Okay, the Triple Committee on Water and Land, Transportation and Culture and Arts, and the Committee on Government Operations is going into decision-making on SB 1535, and members, Chair's recommendation is to pass with these amendments. We're going to adopt DLNR's recommended amendments, that the historic review exemption that only applies within areas previously disturbed and only to the depth of the known soil disturbance, not to exceed 24 inches below grade, and that any exemption not apply on historic districts and areas with a high probability for the presence of archaeological sites or burial sites. We'll also defect the date to July 1, 2050 for continued discussions. We're also going to adopt the State Procurement Office's recommendation, that's to remove the 103D HRS exemption. Okay? Having said that, any discussions? Hearing, yes, Senator Alafonte?
Yeah, I'll be, I appreciate the amendments, but I'll be voting with reservations. I'd like to see if there's a list of potential projects that this bill would impact. Thank you.
Thank you, and DOT, make sure that we have a list forthcoming to the Committees. Mahalo. Okay, for the Committee on Water and Land, Chair's recommendation to pass SB 1535 with amendments. Okay, any discussions? Okay, hearing none for the Committee on Water and Land. Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 1535 with amendments. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye with reservation. Senator Chang is excused. Senator McKelvey?
Yes.
Senator Favella is excused. Madam Chair, the measure passes with amendments.
Thank you for the Committee on Transportation, Culture, and Arts. Same recommendation on SB 1535 to pass with amendments, noting excused absence of Senator Keohe Kauloe. Are there any...
Are there any, noting reservations for Senator Alafonte? Any other reservations or no's?
No.
No for Senator Awa. Recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Committee on Government Operations, same recommendation as Water and Land. Senate draft one. The Chair votes yes.
Vice Chair Gabbard is excused. Senator San Buena Ventura?
Aye.
I vote yes. Senator Awa?
No.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, members.
Okay, thank you, folks. This concludes the triple hearing.
Thank you. We're convening the Joint Committees on Transportation and Culture and the Arts and Committee on Government Operations on our 3:05 PM agenda here in State Capitol Conference from 224 on SB 119 relating to the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts. I'll note, we have a ton of testimony on this measure. So we'd like to make sure to remind everybody that you submit your written testimony to the committees. And we'd also like to note that because we have the written testimony of everybody who has dutifully submitted their testimony, we could ask for brevity. We do have a one-minute timer, but to the extent that folks are willing to stand on their testimony, we understand, I think, a lot of the testimony is going to be pretty identical. So if you could maybe add something, just not repeat. So with that, why don't we go into the first, or the only bill, SB 119, linking State Foundation Culture and the Arts. And hopefully we can get to every testifier. Testifying first is the Attorney General. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Randall Nishiyama for the Department of the Attorney General. We have submitted our written comments and are available to respond to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts.
Chair's Lee McKelvey, it's Karen Ewell. I am the interim executive director for the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts, and I stand on my written testimony.
Thank you. Up next is, and that's in position, Department of Budget and Finance. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Superintendent Astor, Deputy Director for Department of Budget and Finance, and we stand on our written testimony in opposition.
Thank you. Up next is Dance Space Hawaii in opposition, Winwood Arts Guild in opposition, Rachel Orr Art in opposition, Ebene Flow Arts in support. We have, let me go straight to the folks who are here with us, supposedly testifying. Ayesha Carter? On Zoom?
Hi. Hi.
Good afternoon, we can hear you.
Okay. Good afternoon, my name is Ayesha Carter. I am a teaching artist on the State Foundation of Culture and the Arts teaching roster. I am testifying today after conducting classes here at Waheh Elementary School on the island of Maui through the Artist, Art in Public Places program. I am opposition to HB 119 on behalf of myself and the thousands of students that I've taught over the years on Maui, Molokai, Lina'i, and Kuaia. These programs support, supported by the Art in Public Places and the Artists in the Schools programs are the only access to the arts for most of the students I've taught. Through the arts, these students are engaging in the creative process that pulls together the core subjects that students are learning. These programs give students a way to engage in the process of learning and collaboration that our Hawaii students greatly need, especially with the learning loss and suffering of social skill development during the pandemic. This bill would be extremely detrimental to all of those students who could benefit from these programs. I'm staunchly in opposition of this bill, and we should be funding these programs more, not less.
Thank you. Up next is Carrie Valentine. Good afternoon.
Vice Chair, my name is Carrie Valentine. I'm also part of the Artists in the Schools program for many, many years, doing this on the islands of Kuaia and Molokai. And I stand in my position. Also, it, in essence, just doesn't make sense to pick all these these offices that give to so many thousands of students along the islands, there, some of them, their only art opportunity to go to some recorded archive footage that doesn't even state what, and states that it won't be available for the general public. So for me, you know, please humbly say the bill doesn't make sense. It's third the humanity and community of Kuaia. I'll be available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Up next is Paul James Brown. Good afternoon.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'm opposed to this bill. The criteria for determining performing arts is so broad as to be impossible to select, administer, and evaluate. Will the state determine whether a performance belongs in the state museum by visiting every performance in the state? Does it intend to send a committee to every performance in the state to determine whether it should be included in the state's collection? When you record a performance, you have to have permission from the rights holders. Most performances are archival and they're shot from the back of the house rather than a performance, you do not get the sense of a performance when you look at an archival shot. You have to, in order to get the sense of a performance, you have to do a special performance video with new crew who are in addition to the crews that you would have. This is a very, very badly drafted bill, and you should dump this bill into the ocean as soon as possible and forget it.
Thank you very much. Up next is Carrie Powantia.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, thank you. In-person testimony, Sean Brown. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Committee Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee members. I stand on my written.
You need to speak into the mic, thank you.
I stand on my written testimony in opposing this bill, and I agree with that person. It's going to the drink.
Can you say, can you say your name again for the record?
Sean Brown. I'm an artist and educator.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, for in-person testimony, we have Dave Moss. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Dave Moss, President and CEO of the Hawaii Symphony Orchestra. Stand by the testimony submitted already and very much in support of this bill and support for the Performing Arts through State Foundation. Thank you. Here for any questions.
Thank you. That is all the in-person testimony that's been submitted. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to testify? Oh.
I'm sorry, somehow our testimony, testimony that's submitted, but we provide comments and we'll get it submitted to you.
Thank you. Next.
Oh, you cannot come up without your. No, no, just don't be, just don't be.
Good afternoon.
Aloha, Chair Lee and Vice Chair Noe and members of the Committee. I'm a local musician, born and raised here in Hawaii, and I think everything that needed to be said has been said. Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Jake Shumubukro. And I do stand by my testimony in opposition of this bill. And I hope that together, you know, we can find another solution. Especially after the last few years, you know, I think we need the arts more than ever, you know, to bring the community together. I've seen firsthand what music and the arts do, you know, to just make such a positive impact on the community and especially the children, you know. I get to work, I have the opportunity to work with a lot of kids, and I see what it does and what it does for their self-esteem, what it does for just inspiring them and getting them fired up, you know, to be passionate, find their passion for whatever it is, you know, even if it's not arts-related. So I don't want to take up any more time, but, you know, but I do stand by my, by my testimony. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward. Good afternoon.
Patricia Steinhoff, representing the Hawaii Handweavers Hui. Honorable Committee members, thank you very much. The Hawaii Handweavers Hui is very much in opposition to Senate Bill 1119 because it will reduce the amount of funding that's available for small arts organizations and for working artists in Hawaii. I would point out to you that when you are sitting in your Senate chambers in this building, you are looking up at a tapestry made by one of our former members, Ruth Adele Anderson, and a team of weavers. And I hope when you look at that, you will think about the handiwork that went into it, and we'll try to support more of our weavers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here in the room with us wishing to testify in this measure? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Senators. Thank you for, I'm Sean Chu. I'm a theater artist and advocate. Thank you for your work on this bill. I'm concerned about the copyright thing, the measure about that. I think common practice is licensing artists when you do record things. And while I'm, I am a performing artist, and initially, when I heard about this bill, I was like, oh, yay, money for artists like me. When I went to the House Committee to hear the companion bill, I heard the testimony and I learned a lot from people like Karen. And then I was like, how else can artists be supported who are not visual artists? And I feel like there's other methods or ways to do that that people who are more wise than we can figure out. And yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify in this measure this afternoon? If not, other questions? All right.
Question?
Oh, Senator.
Question for Mr. Nishiyama as well as Karen Ewell. Mr. Nishiyama, your objection to this bill is based on the tax exempt general obligation bonds, which have certain restrictions placed on them, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So if these were non, are taxable bonds, you wouldn't have any of these objections, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I was, I'm under the understanding that when the budget and finances floated an eight billion, eight million, $800 million bond and 60% was tax exempt, 40% was taxable bonds. So if we kept it only to taxable bonds, we wouldn't have all the objections you've outlined in your testimony, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Karen, I understand that about 30% of the artwork that you have is sitting in a storage, is sitting in storage, is that correct?
23% actually, and it's actually in rotation. So we need to have works of art available as we rotate the over 7,000 works of art throughout the state, art throughout the state.
Okay, but as you purchase more and more art, more and more art is just sitting in storage and going through that rotation?
I wouldn't necessarily say sitting in storage, but there is art that is not on display currently, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions? All right, if not, thank you very much. Thank you, we're going to recess.
I'm ready to roll.
Okay. Okay. Are we in IT?
Yes, yes, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody, for your patience. We're in decision making on Senate Bill 119 for the Committees on Transportation, Culture, and Arts and Community and Government Operations, Chairs having conferred. We'd like to move the measure forward with some amendments. And we want to make this clear for everybody because I know everyone's taking their time to come down here this afternoon. I don't think it's anyone's intention to deprive anyone of opportunity to engage in the arts. We'd like to contribute to that. So what we want to do is, because this is the first time we'll be engaging, I think, in performing arts through the State Foundation, we'd like to set this up as a pilot project and add an additional general fund appropriation to fund a series of grants and other things that the bill contemplates, removing the portion of funding that would come out of the existing funding for the arts. So this would be additive rather than moving things around. And then finally, set up a committee to oversee the program with recommendations to be made, learning from the experience, so that in time, we can return and make something permanent happen.
There's a defective date.
And with a defective date, yes. So any discussion on that?
Oh, yeah. How much we're going to put in?
We're going to leave it blank for now. It's going to go to WHAM, so we'll, we'll see what they do. Okay, Vice Chair?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We're also going to clarify, so in the recommendation, we're also going to clarify the copyright and simplify the definition of performing arts to arts or skills that are intended to be performed before an audience, including dance, singing, musical performances, and theater, which should address some of the concerns raised by, I think, some of the stakeholders. Also removing the definitions of display and works of art to address concerns about various testifiers about what copyright law is as it pertains to this bill. And have SFCA run with the program and amend the preamble accordingly. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, real quick, just so I'm clear. Everybody that was opposed is good with this. Otherwise, you know, you typically go vote no, but if you made it all right, I'll vote yes to this.
Yeah, they're good with it, yeah. Because we're adding to, we're not taking away.
So my other question is, are you going to put a recommended amount?
You're going to speak on the mic, Joy.
Are you going to put a recommended amount in the conference report as to how much you would recommend that we, for general funds?
I think not yet. This is the first time we're contemplating a general fund appropriation. So we can, as this goes forward to next committees, we can kind of figure out what makes sense. Okay, Vice Chair?
For the Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts, Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 119 with amendments. Chair Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Alafonte?
Aye.
Okay, Senator Keo Ho Kaloule is excused. Senator Awa?
Aye.
Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Government Operations, same recommendation, SD1.
Chair McKelvey?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gabbard's excuse. Senator San Buena Ventura?
Aye.
I vote yes. Senator Awa?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, members, appreciate it. See you in the next room.
Thank you, everybody.
Calling the 3:10 PM HHS TCA agenda. Members of my committee is myself, Vice Chair is Senator Aquino, Senator Awa is a member, Senator Moriwaki is a member. And for TCA, your members are?
Chair, Vice Chair, Senator Alafonte, Senator Awa.
This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business 3:10 PM Thursday, February 16, Room 224, and via video conference. Those who are on Zoom, your audio will be muted, video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. Each testify will have one minute to testify. If there's a technical glitch during your time to testify, we may have to move on to the next person. Due to time constraints, I'll be reading a list of individuals who submit written testimony. For each measure, we apologize that closed captioning does not accurately transcribe the names. If you're interested in reviewing the written testimony, please go to the legislator's website. You will find a link on the written testimony. Please go to, for the measure. We appreciate your understanding and remind you that committee does have your written testimony. And I encourage you to use your time wisely. You have one minute, and I'm very strict with a one minute. And as you folks know, if we don't pass it, your bill is dead, so please be wise. So first up, SB 101. We have, excuse me. We have State Council on Developmental Disabilities in support. Okay, next up, we have AARP in support.
We stand our testimony in support.
Thank you. Next up, National Federation of the Blind in support. Donald Sakamoto, are you there? Okay, we're moving on since, are there any questions, members? Seeing none, we're moving on. SB 384, relating to access for disabled persons. First up, we have D-CAB in support.
Urban Safety Check and Directors in support.
Standing. Thank you very much. Next, State Council on Developmental Disability. Next, State Council on Developmental Disabilities in support. Next up, Hawaii Disability Rights Center in support. Peter Fritz in support. Peter, are you standing on your written testimony?
Yes, I am, in support of the intent, but I recommend that, based upon past history where fines were not in the bill for parking and different rates have developed, that it would be better to include those fines in the bill, as well as to propose that any standard for parking, because this is a federal law, so the state has to incorporate the ADA standards into its own procedures, be promulgated in the same manner that D-CAB promulgated administrative rules. So they develop administrative rules for the parking standards for the state to use for their enforcement.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have David Fukuzawa in support. Anybody else wishing to testify in SB 384? Members, any questions? Okay, moving on. SB 465 relating to medical cannabis. First up, State Department of Transportation providing comments.
Do you stand our testimony?
Thank you very much. Next, Department of Health providing comments.
Do you stand on our testimony?
Thank you very much. Next, we have Attorney General providing comments on Zoom. Oh, you're not, you're in person.
Good.
Make it quick.
Thank you.
Andrew Goff, on behalf of the Attorney General, we do note in our testimony that the current, all inter-island travel is federal jurisdiction, so we are concerned that this would be misinterpreted as allowing patients to travel inter-island with cannabis. And also, the real concern is that it would be misconstrued to require airlines to allow cannabis travel. And currently, the FAA has a pretty strict law enforcement policy that any airline could face losing its plane and any pilot could face losing their certificate. So we would, we did include recommended language to clarify.
We saw that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Drug Policy Forum of Hawaii in support. Aloha Green Holdings, Inc. in support. Tai Chang, are you on Zoom?
Not present, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, I see Cliff Otto on Zoom, Akamai Cannabis Consulting. And I, we do have your written testimony about the 12-mile boundary. So use your time wisely, Mr. Dr. Otto.
Yes, I will, Chair. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committees. Dr. Cliff and Otto testifying on behalf of Akamai Cannabis Consulting. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of this measure. You have a written testimony. I just wanted to emphasize that this bill is important, not only because it could help our patients and dispensaries, but because it could help answer a fundamental question, and that is, what are the jurisdictional limits of the state? The answer to this question could have significant implications for the inter-island and intrastate transport of cannabis in Hawaii. Thank you for considering our proposed amendments, and I will be available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have 10 other individuals in support. Cannabis Society of Hawaii in support, and one individual in opposition. Anybody else wishing to testify in SB 465? Come on up. You have one minute, and please take your name and talk into the mic.
My name is Thomas Millsaric. I live on the North Shore. I've been surfing there for, since 1976. I don't know the details of this bill, but I would just hope that there's a caution, if it's passed, that marijuana can be psychologically addicting. And if that caution is, if you are aware of that caution, that would be a good thing. If you're not, I would hope you would become aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify in SB 465? I see Randy Gont. Please identify yourself. You have one minute.
Aloha, my name is Randy Gont. I'm the Director of the Hawaii Cannabis Industry Association. We'll make sure to get over testimony for you all, but we are in support of this measure. We've been studying this issue for a few years now. We work with our sister organization, the National Cannabis Industry Association. They linked us up with other states that are successfully doing this without federal intervention. As we know, our program in general is a federal issue, and there haven't been any issues with states like Alaska. There is a CFR that FAA uses that says if a pilot is knowingly transferring the product or any illicit substance in the Scheduled Substances Act, that they are liable to it. But if they are not knowingly carrying that product, they have plausible deniability. So states like Alaska are doing this very successfully, and they have kind of given us our comments on that. We also have conferred with our attorney, who is the former Attorney General, David Lewy, who's provided some comments on that as well. So we'll make sure to get over that information to you all, and this is really important for patients. So thank you for taking it up.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify in SB 465? Questions, members? Seeing none, we need to recess for decision making. Okay, we're gonna --
Question, Chair.
Oh, sorry.
What's the --
Chair, Chair Inouya needs --
Yes, just a question. What's the approval date we're looking at for this one?
I think we're defect dating all of them.
Oh, okay.
To ensure further discussion.
No, the bill itself. When does it go into effect?
We're defect dating it.
Okay. Somehow, maybe Attorney General can, it's just a question of, even though we, let's say we adopt --
Andrew Goff, could you come on up?
If we adopt your recommendation, the only concern I had is with regards to airports. And why I asked about the date, Chair, is because there's the regulations with regards to TSA. So, you know, the time that the bill passes and when it's approved, what's the alternatives to let everyone know that we're doing this so our patients don't get stuck at the airports? So that's the only thing that maybe we can include in the committee report or something.
Your concerns.
Yeah, it's just a matter of when it's passed, when the bill passes, okay, when does it go into effect, just to make sure that an alert goes out to all those who travel with, you know, these prescriptions, that, you know, everything is cool. So do we need to do that in the bill is something, because we're working now with the feds, and so we're approving it statewide, but then they get stuck with TSA. So just something, if we can allow a process.
Sure, that's something we can definitely discuss, but it would be still federally illegal, so it's up to TSA to enforce that law.
My suggestion is, because it's gonna go lateral to another committee, will you submit written testimony to, regarding Chair Inouya's concerns, as to whether, as to some kind of warning or timing on the effect of the statute?
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Senator Alafonte.
Yeah, quick question. You're Mr. Goff, right?
Yes.
So if the committee were to accept your language, that would be fine with, with your office?
I mean, we would still have concerns, because it could be misconstrued as allowing it when it is federally illegal, but I mean, there's already language in there that says travel is with the understanding that the state law ends at the state borders. So that's, you know, a chance that they would have to take. And as far as it would not require a private entity to, you know, break federal law, then I think of my office would be okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goff.
Okay, any other questions, senators? Okay, we're gonna proceed with decision making. I believe I provided my decision making notes. For SB 101, Chair's recommendation is to pass with D-CAB amendments and add a defect date to ensure that there is further discussion in the event that there's any other errors that we need to fix along the way. Any comments, questions, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Okay, Senate Bill 101, recommendation of the Chair to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Sarah Moriwaki.
Aye.
Sarah Shumbukworo is excused. Senator Awa.
No.
Thank you very much. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, committee. Transportation, Culture, and Arts, same recommendation.
Okay, Chair's recommendation to pass SB 101 for the Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts is to pass with amendments. Chair Lee.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Alafonte.
Aye.
Senator Keo Ho Kaluli is excused. Senator Awa.
No.
Okay, measure is adopted. Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. For SB 384, Chair's recommendation is to pass with D-CAB amendments and also defect date to ensure that all errors are fixed before the law becomes law. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, vice chair for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Senate Bill 384, SD 1. If the members are present, any reservations, any noes? Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you for the Committee on Transportation, Culture, and Arts, same recommendation.
Okay, Chair's recommendation on SB 384, Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts, is to pass with amendments. Chair Lee.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Alafonte.
Aye.
Okay, Senator Awa.
Aye.
Okay, Senator Keo Ho Kaluli is excused. Measure is adopted. Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, for SB 465, Chair's recommendation is to pass with Attorney General's amendments and add a defect date to continue further discussion. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, vice chair for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Okay, Senate Bill 465, SD 1. Four members are present, any reservations, any noes? Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you for the Committee on Transportation, Culture, and Arts, same recommendation.
Okay, Chair's recommendation to pass SB 465 with amendments. Chair Lee.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Alafonte.
Aye.
Okay, Senator Awa.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Measure is adopted. Mr. Chair with Senator Keo Ho Kaluli in excused.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 3:10 PM. Calendar is adjourned. Thank you very much, folks.
We're reconvening the Committee on Transportation, Culture, and Arts for decision making on our 3:00 PM agenda on SB 498 relating to fireworks, which was previously heard in this committee earlier. Want to thank co-chair Waukeah on this, as this was joined with PSM and Senator Alafonte, who had worked on some of the substance here. So we'd like to move this forward for further discussion, making some amendments. First, changing appropriation to a $1 million general fund appropriation, ensuring that there's, secondly, no increase in fees. Third, making sure that off-site inspections must be final at the container drop, must be at the final container drop-off location and within 24 hours, or in a non-active harbor area at the director's discretion to address all the issues raised by some of the stakeholders. Contraband will be under the jurisdiction of law enforcement, and tampering with a secure container seal would result in fines of a blank amount, which we'll leave blank for the moment as this goes on to the Judiciary and Ways and Means Committees. And finally, we put on a defective date to ensure that we can have some further discussion on this. So any discussion? Oh, there you go. Sorry. All right, there's no discussion. Recommendation is to move this on with amendments.
Okay, Chair's recommendation to pass SB 498 with amendments. Chair Lee.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Alafonte.
Aye.
Okay, Senator Awa.
No.
Okay, measure is adopted with the absence of Keo Ho Kaluli, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you very much. All right, that is our 3:00 PM. So we're gonna go into our 3:15 PM agenda for the Committee on Transportation, Culture, and Arts. Thank you, everyone, for your patience and the audience. I know we have a number of measures on the agenda this afternoon. We'd like to ask that everybody make sure their written testimony is submitted, and for those who have, we have your written testimonies, we'd like to ask you to summarize, if you would, to make sure that we have time to get through all the testifiers and all the bills. And we do have a number of bills. That said, there's a one-minute time limit for those who would like to continue to speak. We'd ask you just to make sure your, your words are concise and hopefully not repetitive, but maybe additive to something that someone else already brought up. So that said, up first is SB 1504 relating to a modern Hawaii History Museum, which is established as a museum of modern Hawaii history, a task force to take a look at how to move forward with that. Testifying first is the Department of Accounting and General Services.
On behalf of State Comptroller Keith Regan, I am Dr. Adam Jansen, State Archivist. DAG stands on its testimony in support of this, and as State Archivist, I'm super excited about sharing history with the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. Karen Ewald, State Foundation Culture and Arts Interim Executive Director. We stand on our testimony in support.
Thank you. Next is the Judiciary.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair. I'm Batiste, Detective Director of the Church Center. I'll stand on the testimony.
Thank you. Up next is Department of Budget and Finance with comments and Mission Museum with comments. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in this measure this afternoon? If not, are there any questions? If not, thank you very much. Let's move on to the next measure, Senate Bill 1532 relating to Culture and Arts, which establishes the Hawaii Leadership Awards Program to honor individuals who have made considerable and outstanding contributions to Hawaii and serve as inspirations to others, which is all of you people getting involved in the civic process. All right, SB 1532, up first is the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts.
Again, hello. We stand on our written testimony in support and are looking forward to enacting this.
Thank you. Up next, we have support from one individual, and that is all the written testimony we have. Is there anyone else who wishing to testify in this measure this afternoon? All right, if not, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to the next measure, SB 1120 relating to the Works of Art Special Fund, which requires the State Art Museum to provide opportunities for the counties and private organizations to display art through loan arrangements with the State Foundation. Testifying first is the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts.
Hello again. We stand on our written testimony with comments. We just want to make sure that the works of art will be in public spaces, even if it's not state.
Thank you. And that's all the testimony we have on 1120. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in this measure? If not, are there any questions? If not, thank you. Let's move on to the next measure, SB 1119 relating to the Works of Art Special Fund, which specifies that 0.5%, rather than 1% of the state fund appropriations for capital improvements shall be transferred to the Works of Art Special Fund. And testifying first is the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts.
We stand on our written testimony in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Hawaii Handweaver's Hui. Here with us before in opposition, Na'Mea Hawaii, in opposition. We have a number of organizations in opposition, none who are signed up to testify in person. The next person signed up is Sean Brown. Good afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon, committee chair, vice chair, and committee members. My name is Sean Brown. I'm an artist and educator. I stand on my testimony in opposition to the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Johnny Makas. Apologize if I just butchered your name. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Hello. Hello, my name is Johnny Makas, and I'm a tax bank citizen in Honolulu County, Oahu. I'm an artist, arts educator, art historian, and interpretive guide at a local publicly-funded museum. I'm contracted by the Hawaii State Art Museum, and I think it's important to make clear that Hawaii State Art Museum does extremely good things day in, day out. A bill like this, that's gonna cut funding from 1% to 0.5%, is incredibly egregious as like an arts educator as well. It also cuts things like the student arts exhibitions and funds like that for exhibitions and programs of that nature that provide no-charge art activities and art exhibitions for children all amongst the state. I think it's very important to remember also that from the beginning of the State Foundation for Culture and the Arts in the 1960s, up until 2019, only 11% of that funding went to Native Hawaiian artists. And just in the past few years, 70%, over 70% of that funding is now dedicated to Native Hawaiian art and artists. And so it's important, in my opinion, to keep that kind of funding going, if anything, to increase it, not to cut it. Thank you for your time. I stand on my written testimony. Have a good day.
Thank you. Next is Carrie Pelison.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. Paul James Brown, good afternoon.
I stand on my written testimony, but I'd like to emphasize a couple of things about
it. If this measure were to pass, it would have a disastrous impact on the state's ability to purchase works of art. Our state program, our program was the first state in the United States to have a percent for art program. That was put forth by Masaru Ponbi Yokouchi, the first Chair of the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts, who is a son of Maui. He spearheaded the legislative effort for the adoption of our first-in-the-country percent for art program in 1967, and I think this measure would make him spin in his grave. It shocks me that the introducers of this measure, who both purport to represent Maui, would dishonor one of Maui's most beloved, generous and well-known sons by attacking the program that he birthed. Please, do not allow this bill to go any further.
Thank you. Up next is Maki Moranoi.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. Jermaine Salim Hagihara.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
And Setsuko Moranoi.
And not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, thank you. We do have another, probably, I don't know, 75 or so individuals in opposition to this measure. That's all the written testimony we have. Is there anyone else here in the room wishing to testify in this measure? All right, oh, good afternoon, sir.
Aloha. I, a scholar and an artist, and I stand in opposition for what has been stated earlier. And I feel, as a sculptor, I'm more visual than verbal, but I like to stand by what has been shared.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify in this measure, please come forward. All right, if not, are there any questions? All right, thank you. Let's move on to the next measure, Senate Bill 822 relating to Creative Districts, excuse me, which creates a process for the establishment of a creative district and provides for tax credits for those districts. Testifying first is Creative Industries, out of D-Bet.
Chair, Vice Chair, stand on our testimony and with me, George Skinner with CID, answer your question.
Thank you, comments. Up next is Department of Taxation.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Catherine, I'm representing the Department of Taxation. Department stands on the written testimony and comments. I don't need to play any questions.
Thank you. Up next is OIP with comments, State Foundation for Culture and the Arts, on Culture and the Arts.
I'm Karen, State Foundation Culture and Arts, stand on my written testimony and support.
Thank you. Next is Tax Foundation of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. This is Jay McMillan, on behalf of the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We will stand on our written comments submitted on this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have comments from one individual. Is there anyone else here in the room with us wishing to testify in this measure or on Zoom? If not, are there any questions? All right, if not, thank you. Let's move on to the next measure, Senate Bill 1224, which amends required coverage for shared cars that make available, that are made available through a peer-to-peer car sharing program, and repeals a number of exclusions, record-keeping and other things. And testifying first is DCCA, Insurance Division.
Good afternoon, Chair Lee, Vice Chair, Gordon, you know, Insurance Commission, testify in the hour. You stand on our written testimony and support.
Thank you. Up next is DCCA Office of Consumer Protection.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. The Office of Consumer Protection, Mona Moriarty, Executive Director. We oppose this bill. I just want to highlight one portion of this bill in particular, and that is the, how the bill eliminates, oh, I'm sorry, I'm tracking the wrong one. Page eight, lines eight through 15 of the bill, it appears that this bill would eliminate coverage, the coverage responsibility for the platform in instances where no other coverage is provided. That would be a fairly egregious oversight, in our view, and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Hawaii Insurance Council.
We stand, Mr. Chair, in opposition.
Thank you. Turo Inc.
Thank you, Chair, we'll stand in support.
Thank you. Next is Hawaii Association for Justice.
Good afternoon, Chair, we also stand in opposition.
Thank you. And State Farm.
The Chair will stand in opposition.
Thank you. That's all the written testimony we have on SB 1224. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? If not, are there any questions? Just real quick for Turo then. Appreciate your testimony. This is a similar issue that we have visited in prior years. Last year, there was an agreement which Turo had suggested a $750,000 level of coverage and agreed to a number of other provisions in the measure, and this year, you're returning to repeal those. Is that right?
Thank you for the question, Chair Lee. Good afternoon, I'm David Avon, I argue with Turo. I just want to clarify the specific provisions that we offered in written testimony last year. We specifically offered $750,000 as it pertained to the host or the vehicle in this case that is provided. And I actually have that language available. If you'd like me to provide it to the committee, I'm happy to share that accordingly. But that is distinct and different from what is being offered, what came, what was, what took effect under Act 56. This measure seeks to, one, address the policy concerns as it pertains to peer-to-peer being set at such a, there being such a disparity at being set at that $750,000, which we've consistently raised concerns about as it pertains to both the guest and the host. And it also seeks to keep those provisions in effect, as you know, given that the act itself is set to expire in 2025.
Thank you. And just lastly, Turo is currently required to pay $750,000 level of insurance by other states, as I understand it, is that right?
What is, I think what is, I appreciate that question, Senator. What I would say is this, across 40 states, it's actually aligned, peer-to-peer car sharing is aligned with the state minimums. It is the outlier that there are two states, New York and West Virginia, that are at $750,000 or higher. In the case of West Virginia, there's currently a measure that's actually moving through their legislature as well, which seeks to amend it down, because, at least from what we've been hearing, the Finance Committee there has recognized that these insurance minimums are set at perhaps disproportionately higher than.
And what is the rate in California?
I, you know, Senator, Chair, sorry, I'd have to look into that and get back to you. I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate your testimony. All right, further questions on this measure? If not, let's move on to the next measure, Senate Bill 1225, also relating to insurance, which clarifies when the termination of a peer-to-peer car sharing occurs for the purposes of motor vehicle insurance and clarifies application of the peer-to-peer car sharing insurance laws, and amends the minimum motor vehicle insurance coverage for shared cars to be consistent with existing minimum coverage for personal vehicles. Testifying first on 1225 is DCCA, the Insurance Division. Up next is DCCA Office of Consumer Protection. Good afternoon.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members, thank you for the opportunity to testify, Mona Moriarty, Executive Director. Two points, I think, worth making here. The Office of Consumer Protection opposes this bill for similar reasons to the last one. In particular, the bill eliminates the ways that a shared car driver may terminate the car sharing time and narrows the definition of peer-to-peer car sharing to authorized uses. We're very concerned that this would create gaps, and the effect of creating gaps in coverage is essentially to allow platforms to market an inferior product to Hawaii consumers. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Hawaii Insurance Council.
Mr. Chair, we stand on our testimony in opposition.
Thank you. Up next is Turo Inc., again. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Noi, Senator Alafonte, David Avon, I argue with Turo. We'll stand on our testimony in support of SB 1225. I only wanted to just add that our, again, our focus is on the insurance provisions for the sake of our discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Association for Justice.
Good afternoon, Chair, Members of the Committee. Thank you, Sua, on behalf of Hawaii Association for Justice. I just wanted to point out two quick things. We agree that also the amended definitions will end up with gaps in coverage, not protecting the consumers. And also, with the $750,000 insurance coverage for the drivers or the cars, it should mimic, which is currently in the statute, the $750,000 protection for third parties, innocent third parties, to protect the consumer. So, we oppose this bill, we hope that the bill will stay, I mean, the statute will stay the same as it is, given that we did just work on this last session. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Get Around in support. That's all the testimony we have on this measure. Is there anyone else wishing to testify this afternoon? If not, are there any questions? All right, if not, thank you. Let's move on to the next measure, Senate Bill 15 relating to vessels, which authorizes the Director of Transportation to adopt rules that regulate and limit noise from vessels at harbors, ports, roadsteads, docks, et cetera. And testifying first is the Department of Transportation.
COC stands on our written testimony and support.
Thank you. Up next is Matson Navigation Company, in opposition, and Hawaii Harbor Users Group. Oh, in opposition. All right, that's all the written testimony we have on this measure. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify? If not, are there any questions? If not, thank you. Let's move on to Senate Bill 969 relating to noise pollution, which establishes that noise generated by helicopters in excess of a certain decibel level constitute a public nuisance, and establishes fines and a private right of action. Testifying first, we have Congressman Ed Case in support. Department of Health.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Sean Haruno, I'm with the Department of Health Noise Section, and we stand on our written testimony.
With comments. Thank you. Up next is the Attorney General. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, many members. My name is Whit Hargrove, I'm a Deputy Attorney General, and I'm here on behalf of the Attorney General's Office. Just wanted to bring attention to the fact that this measure is subject to challenge pursuant to the Supremacy Clause of the United States Constitution. The likely basis of the challenge would be that it is preempted by congressional act that makes basically our airspace federal property, as a matter of speaking. And then, just notably, in the area of preemption, which of course we, you guys deal with frequently in the legislature, this is an area where there is frankly very little ambiguity, and the preemptive effect of the law in this area having been reviewed by the courts, the plain, plain language of the operative federal law is uniquely constructive as to what likely outcomes of it. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention, and I will be available if you have any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next is the Department of Transportation.
COC stands on its testimony.
Thank you. Up next is Jack Carter Helicopters.
In opposition. Helicopter Association International in opposition. Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association in opposition. Corey Harden.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. Barbara Mayer, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Barbara Mayer. Having collected actual tourist helicopter flyover data here in Waimea Manalo, I stand in solid support of SB 969, as stated in my written testimony. In addition, I'd like to offer my property for a few days to allow for professional audio recording of helicopter flyovers without letting helicopter companies know this is being done, so they won't avoid flyovers on those days. Finally, I'd like to add that unless decibel level is strictly enforced, I suspect at least some helicopter pilots will ignore the decibel limits. Therefore, ultimately, I'd like to see helicopters, except for emergencies, banned from flight over land. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have individual, or, excuse me, testimony from one individual with comments. Are there, oh, excuse me, three individuals, and two additional individuals in support. Is there anyone else here with us wishing to testify in this measure? If not, are there any questions? Senator Alafonte.
Yeah, I have a question for the representative from the Department of Health. Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Sean Haruno, Department of Health Noise Section.
How would you measure and monitor the noise? Because in the bill, it says you would take decibel readings at a ground-level site located within X mile radius from the airport. So how would you do that?
We don't. So, anything dealing with aircraft and altering aircraft flight paths, it's out of our, out of our hands. So, we deal with construction, industrial, agricultural and stationary mechanical noise sources, not aircraft.
Okay. But if this bill were to go, you would have to administer that?
We would have to look into how we would, but it, yeah, we'd have to research that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, thank you. Let's move on to the next measure, Senate Bill 224 relating to noise control, which allows for noise control infractions to be processed under the traffic and emergency period infractions adjudication process, and grants the District Court concurrent jurisdiction over noise control infractions committed by minors. Testifying first on SB 224 is the Judiciary. With comments, Honolulu Police, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Zoom Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Captain Bert Soria, with the Honolulu Police Department, assigned to District Six Waikiki. We're standing on written testimony, testimony to support Senate Bill 224. Thank you, I'll be available for any questions.
Thank you. Up next is the Department of Prosecuting Attorney, city and county.
Chair, I will send out this one, if you want to.
Thank you. That's all the testimony we have on this measure. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify today? If not, are there any questions? All right, if not, thank you. Let's move on to the next measure, Senate Bill 844 relating to special number plates, which authorizes the issuance of special number plates to commemorate Malama Pu'u Loa. And testifying first on 844 is Hui'o Ho'o Nua. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair.
And Committee, my name is Anthony Chance, I'm CEO of Hui'o Ho'o Nua. And in addition, of standing on my testimony in full support of this bill, I would like to submit an amendment on page two, line 10, where it says, Hui'o Ho'o Nua, I mean, Malama Pu'u Loa, needs to be changed to Hui'o Ho'o Nua as the 501(c)(3). Malama Pu'u Loa is our program to support this restoration of Pu'u Loa, which is Pearl Harbor. And that's it, sir.
Thank you. Up next, we have Hawaii Bicycling League in support, and four individuals in support. That's all the testimony we have on this measure. Is anyone else wishing to testify this afternoon? If not, all right, thank you. Let's move on to the next measure, Senate Bill 315 relating to motor vehicle registration, which classifies certain former military vehicles as special interest vehicles, and enables them to apply for registration. Testifying first on 315 is the Department of Transportation.
COC stands on its testimony and opposition.
Thank you. Up next is the Hawaii Public Utilities Commission.
Good afternoon, Department of Commerce stands on its written testimony with comments.
Thank you. That's all the written testimony we have on this measure. Is there anyone else wishing to testify this afternoon? All right, if not, thank you, everybody, let's move, are there any questions? Let's move on to the next measure, Senate Bill 785 relating to Sustainable Development Goals. Testifying first is Dillinar.
Well, Dillinar stands on his testimony and support, and I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Next is the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. Good afternoon.
Aloha, Chair, Senators. My name is Daniel Bass, Sustainability Coordinator of the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. We offer comments specifically strongly supporting the UN Sustainable Development Goals. However, we make a note that these are now codified by reference in the Hawaii State Planning Act. Due to the fact that Hawaii revised statutes, section 226-65, which codified the state's Climate and Sustainability Strategic Action Plan, also known as the Hawaii 2050 Sustainability Plan, actually included all of those SDGs. So this bill is no longer necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Patricia Beekman. Good afternoon.
Please oppose.
Please oppose SB 785, the bill relating to sustainable development goals. It is a copy of the United Nations Agenda 2030, removing the American tradition of state's rights in favor of global control, which is a repudiation of the freedoms our country was founded on. Decisions on the environment are best made locally, not by an international organization that couldn't possibly know or care about local conditions, as well as we, the people in Hawaii who live here. We don't have local control over, if we, if we don't have local control over our environment and control over what goes into our own bloodstreams, we have virtually no control at all and have entered true hell on earth, right here and what used to be paradise. Don't do this to us.
Thank you. Next is Thomas Millsaric.
Millsaric.
Millsaric, apologies.
My name, that's okay. My name is Thomas Millsaric. As stated before, I'm 73 years old. I still surf on the North Shore. I surfed in extra-large surf at the Pipeline Contest about 10 days ago. On a short surfboard, I don't say that to brag. I say that to say that as a 73-year-old person, I have much knowledge related to this bill in relation to health, vaccines, and agriculture. I was horribly poisoned by pesticides in 1983, almost lost my life, almost was committed to a mental institution. I was horribly injured by a vaccine in 2000, lost my job over 33 years. I am blind in my right eye from that vaccine. My teeth, which used to be big, bright, beautiful surfer teeth, broke up within a couple of days and fell out of my mouth due to this vaccine. My time is probably up, but I'll say also that, related to health in this bill, the United States ranks next to or last of all developed nations on the planet when it comes to overall health outcomes. That's a fact. I will say that our children, who in 1980s had 11% chronic illnesses, 1986, they passed the Vaccine Act, now they have 55%.
I could ask you to summarize.
55% chronic illnesses. And that's my summary. I have, I am available for.
Are you in opposition or supporting?
Sorry, I think I written in my written testimony, I was in opposition. As, as stated, these issues are very important and need to be addressed.
Thank you. Up next, we have Michelle Melendez. Good afternoon.
Aloha. Thank you so much. I am an absolute opposing of this bill. The very start of your bill says we must undertake profound transformation in how human societies live on Earth. It is not the role of any governing body to run people's lives in a free country. The role of government is to preserve liberty and freedom. Your goal number four, quality education, eliminate gender disparities, this is indoctrination of our youth in regard to their gender, and this is not the responsibility of government at all. Good health and well-being, achieve universal healthcare coverage. What does that mean? Universal is a term for communism and in regards to, what are the roles going to be to get this universal healthcare coverage? Please do, please do not put past this. It is not the role of any government body to protect individuals' health. In 1856, the US Supreme Court found that a law enforcement officer has no duty to protect any individual. That, that is the responsibility of each individual. The only duty that they have is to enforce the law. The government cannot run people's lives. There are so many things in this bill.
I could ask you to summarize.
Each one of these things needs to have its own bill. Please, please oppose this bill.
Thank you. That's all the, well, we have additional number of individuals in opposition and written testimony, but that's everyone who signed up to testify. Is there anyone else here in the room with us wishing to testify in this measure? If not, all right, are there any questions? And just one for OP. Like in your testimony, you said that this has already been codified into law, 226, is that right?
Yes, the Hawaii State Planning Act codified the state climate and sustainability strategic action plan in 226-65. We since published that plan in December, or excuse me, June of 2021, which actually utilized the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals as a, as a framework for that plan. So, by default, it's in alignment already.
Thank you. All right, any further questions? If not, thank you. Let's move on to the last measure, SB 1037. And I'll just note, we do have to be out of here in about 10 minutes, so we'd ask folks to be very concise, because we still have to come back and vote. So, first on 1037 is DLR. And, and support, Malama Pupukea Wamea.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee. In the effort of time, I'm going to go ahead and pass my time on to the next testifier, but we are in full enthusiastic support of this bill. Mahalo.
Thank you. Up next is Kua'a Ina Ulu Awamo.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair. Kevin Chang for Kua'a Ina Ulu Awamo. Just want to thank everyone for moving this bill forward, hoping that you'll send it out of your committee, other than that we stand on our testimony. Happy Valentine's Day.
Mahalo. Up next is Malama Limu Club, Kamehameha Schools Kapalama, in support. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Aloha, my name is Madison Marata, and I represent the Kamehameha Schools Malama Limu Club. Our club strives to educate fellow high schoolers on the importance of limu through community service events. We remove invasive limu from various fish ponds and beaches, giving endemic and native Hawaiian limu the opportunity to thrive and maintain diversity in our ocean ecosystems. I'm here on behalf of my 70 club members to offer strong support for SB 1037 to name Limu Kala as our state limu. We strongly support this bill because we believe that Limu Kala deserves to be recognized for its immense importance, both environmentally and culturally, and that this bill will bring awareness to the great need for conserving our native Hawaiian ecosystems. Thank you.
Mahalo. Up next is Ocean Era Inc.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. And Kahako Ohana Association, oh, excuse me, oh, yeah, in support. Then we have additional testimony from about a dozen individuals all in support. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in this measure? If not, are there any questions? If not, all right, we're in recess for decision-making. All right, good afternoon. Reconvening the Committee on Transportation and Culture and Arts for decision-making on our 3:15 PM agenda, beginning with Senate Bill 1504, relating to a modern Hawaii history museum. We'd like to move this measure forward with some amendments, adopting the consideration of the judiciary, adding the Judiciary History Center to the task force. Secondly, amending the description in the preamble pursuant to the comments from Bishop Museum. We'd like to clarify, the museum has a primary focus on territorial and statehood eras, modern day issues, and will partner with and serve as a complement to other institutions. We'd also like to make sure the task force should look into what future partnerships could look like. For example, combining an overlapping missions with the State Archives or the Judiciary History Center and have that conversation. Finally, we'd like to remove the special fund, blank out the appropriation, and put that in the committee report. Any discussion on this? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation to pass SB 1504 with amendments with four members present and a voting with reservations. Any no votes?
No vote.
Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to SB 1532, relating to culture and arts. We'd like to pass this with amendments as well, clarifying that the governor and lieutenant governor shall present awards together with the selection committee, together. Secondly, no one, specifying that no one may receive more than one award in each category or more than one award each year. Finally, blank out the appropriation and adding that to the committee report. Any discussion on this? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation on SB 1532 to pass with amendments with four members present and one excuse, any voting with reservations, any no votes. Okay, measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 1120, relating to the Works of Art Special Fund. We'd like to pass this with amendments, noting from the State Foundation Culture and Arts, clarifying that the art loans to non-museums or public institutions may be made, subject to a fee, to be determined by SFCA, and adding in a defective date for further consideration. Any discussion? If not.
Chair's recommendation on SB 1120 to pass with amendments with four members present and a voting with reservations, any no votes. Measure is adopted and one excuse, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 1119, relating to the Works of Art Special Fund, just noting some of the overwhelming testimony in opposition. I'd like to defer this measure and we can continue the conversation in another manner. Moving on to SB 822, relating to creative districts. We'd like to move this measure forward, passing it with amendments, adopting the recommendations of the Department of Taxation, amending section 9DD, clarifying that taxpayers shall distinguish income from inside and outside of creative districts, also from OIP, clarifying only single notice under the Sunshine Law is, shall be required under this bill, deleting sections 9 dash CB on page 6, lines 6 through 9, and adding in, oh, and that's it. Any discussion on 822? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation to pass SB 822 with amendments with four members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes. Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to SB 1224, relating to insurance. Again, noting some of the opposition here, we'd like to defer this and continue the discussion. There's a House vehicle that is still moving, and the Senate, or this committee previously moved out another vehicle, which is in the Consumer Protection Committee currently, which would address the same issue. Similarly, moving on to SB 1225, relating to insurance, we'd also defer this, noting that there's a similar measure addressing the same issues which this committee had just passed out to the Consumer Protection Committee. Moving on to Senate Bill 15, relating to vessels, we'd like to pass this with amendments, just adding in a defective date. Any discussion? If not, Vice Chair.
With four members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes.
No vote.
Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 969, relating to noise pollution. Similarly, we'd like to pass this with amendments, and we note some of the issues raised by the Attorney General and other stakeholders. And we'll also note, some jurisdictions throughout the United States, we've discovered have similar ability to partner with their various jurisdictions to regulate noise at a certain threshold, and we'd like to figure out how that's being done, considering some of the legal barriers that seem to be present here in Hawaii. So, we'd like to add on defective date to this measure, let it go on to the Judiciary Committee and see if we have time to figure out exactly what those legal implications are and what those jurisdictions are doing in those areas.
To pass with amendments.
So, recommendation to pass with amendments and just continue the discussion.
Chair's recommendation to pass SB 969 with amendments with four members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes. Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to SB 224, relating to noise control, we'd like to move this on as well to the Judiciary Committee, passing with amendments, simply adding on a defective date to ensure further discussion. We'd like a chance to chat with a couple of the stakeholders about some of the issues which we were unable to, I think, get clarity on today. So, recommendation is defective date. Any discussion? If not.
What about the prosecutors?
We'll get them too. Oh, you know, yeah, we'll note that in, we'll note the, we'll note in the committee report. This 224.
Right.
Yeah. We'll note in the committee report and ask Judiciary Committee to take a look at their testimony.
Okay. Chair's recommendation on SB 224 to pass with amendments with four members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes.
No vote.
Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to SB 844, relating to special number plates, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adding in a defective date. Any discussion? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation on SB 844 to pass with amendments with four members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes. Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to SB 315, relating to motor vehicle registration, recommendation similarly, we'd like to check with one of the stakeholders on something here. So, we'd like to move this on, adding in a defective date. Any discussion on this?
Chair's recommendation on SB 315 is to pass with amendments with four members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes. Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to SB 785, relating to sustainable development goals. Just given this has been somewhat addressed already and is part of our state's planning, we'd like to defer this measure.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, moving on to the last bill on the agenda, SB 1037, relating to Limu Kala, like to pass this on with amendments, just adding in a defective date.
Chair's recommendation on SB 1037 to pass with amendments with four members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes. Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.